Okay. The October 7th, 2025 meeting of the Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission is coming to order. It's 5:30. Can you do a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Ms. Proper.
Here.
Mr. Geller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
He is on, he's promoted himself for a panelist, but he's still working on his camera and microphone.
Okay, we'll come back to him.
I'm here, I'm here, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks, Matt. Uh, Mr. Gara.
Not on yet, but I talked to him earlier and said he would be coming on some.
We'll look for him. Uh, Ms. Gort.
Here.
And Mr. Frechter.
I think he said right now.
All right, Mr. Gara.
He's muted.
I am here.
Thanks, Ethan.
Ah, there he is.
Okay.
Hey.
Uh, so any changes to the minutes? If not, uh, we'll go to any changes in the agenda?
There are no changes tonight.
Okay. I'm gonna open the meeting to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen, or press star nine if you are attending the meeting by phone, and then star six to unmute yourself. There's nobody in the audience?
Only one person online.
Okay. Um, in that case, uh, we will proceed to our work session. Chris? Like, Chris, I'm sorry, Cliff.
Well, um, good evening, Planning Commission, Cliff Crossplaner two for the record. Uh, tonight, we are continuing our work session discussion around structure hardening. Um, tonight, we're specifically focusing on our Policy Five Architectural Compatibility, um, regarding our allowed materials. Um, so earlier today, especially for Ethan and Matt online, um, we did take a small materials tour downtown area. Uh, we looked at the Blazing Saddles Building, Main Street Mall, as well as the Atrium, uh, multifamily building. The first two, uh, were using a cementitious product, and then the last, the atrium, was using more of a composite wood siding. Um, so we were able to kind of review those, um, look at the installations, um, and kind of come back with any, um, questions. Um, but tonight, trying to keep more of an open dialogue. Um, in the, um, memo, we've provided a lot of information. Um, I'll review some of it, um, but primarily looking to just go ahead and open up the discussion, um, regarding the materials comparison chart that we, um, provided in the packet, as well as the positive points. Um, so those are kind of two things that we'll focus on tonight. Um, but let me preface a little bit, because I do have a few things to kind of, um, update the commission on. Um, recently, we did have a meeting, um, involving both our building department as well as red, white, and blue. We were more or less going on the strategy and timeline, um, for both adoption, um, for red, white, and blue as a fire district, as well as the Town of Breckenridge Building Department. More or less, building and red, red, white, and blue are going to be adopting the code as a reference, or an appendix to the, um, International Fire Code that will be adopted. This basically allows, um, the two entities to streamline the code, as well as reference it as like the most up-to-date version of the Colorado Wildfire Resiliency Code. Um, this will be, um, updated on a three-year cycle. Um, so it is a little bit different than what we do for our building codes. Um, so that's why they just want to go ahead and adopt it by reference. Um, and then that way, we don't have to every three years come back and keep, um, revising what we have adopted. Um, the other aspect on that, um, previously, we discussed with the commission that we are wanting to do Class II structures across the entire town, regardless of what the, um, Wildland Urban Interface Map identified the area as. Both red, white, and blue and the building department were very happy about that decision. It further helps streamline the regulations across, um, the town. If it's historic down, uh, well, not necessarily historic, but historic district versus the Highlands, they would be under the same, um, regulations. Um, so on, on all fronts, red, white, and blue in the town, um, we're on the same page for that. Um, the other, let's see, where's my? Aspect from Building Department. Um, we did discuss with them about some possible point analysis that we'll get into, um, regarding sprinklers, um, as well as, um, any other kind of, um, retrofit options of how can we, um, help award people that are going the additional step when it's not necessarily required by the code? Um, so that was kind of the overall discussion with the, um, Fire Department and Building Department. But I think we're all on the same page. Um, for a timeline update, it will be going to Town Council on the 28th. Um, so if we think that we want to, um, you know, continue working with the building department, and they have sent us over some, some code language, um, this is primarily for the adoption on their side. So we still have quite a bit of time to kind of, um, perfect our regulations, because they don't go effect until January 2026, so we still have a little bit of time. Um, with that being said, I think staff believes that, um, the Fire Department and Red, White, and Blue can go ahead and adopt, and there may be a small period in between that there's some, um, disconnections, I guess you could say, from building code to the development code. Uh, but then we would quickly get, um, our point analysis and Policy Five R, um, implemented into the development code. Um, obviously, we will need to go to Town Council, um, with those readings to get that approved. So I guess ultimately, try, or sorry, jumping straight into compatibility aspects. Um, so we did include, um, the chart in the, um, memo of our current regulations under Policy Five R. Um, so the things that we saw today were the composite wood siding and fiber cement. Um, so as the code is written right now, regardless of how much you use, um, composite wood siding would incur negative points. The atrium that we saw, um, earlier today on the site visit, that was approved prior to this code being written, um, and before we actually really considered composite, uh, materials, um, for what they are. Um, so, mm, some of you may remember Sarah did an amazing job, um, rewriting our Policy Five regarding the materials itself a couple of years ago. I believe the composite wood siding is when we added in the points at that time. Um, so we are more or less opening it up, um, a couple of years after that discussion, uh, but with the intention of wildfire resiliency and structure hardening. Kind of moving on to more recommendations, I guess you could say. There's a lot of disconnections between our current code and then what the resiliency code is going to require. Um, so per the resiliency code, there are, um, certain materials that would be required that actually are assessed negative points under Policy Five R. Um, so one of the questions this, um, evening to the commission is how flexible we, do we want to be with the negative assignment? Do we want to remove them entirely? Do we want to assign positive points to make it a wash? Um, there's a lot of things kind of up to discussion, uh, but that's kind of one of the primary things, um, as of right now of kind of, uh, Planning Commission's, um, perception on what to do with Policy Five R. Um, moving on a little bit, um, we'll then jump into the actual point analysis. So as I mentioned earlier, um, we have some stuff both from, um, the red, white, and blue, um, looking to award sprinkler systems, um, when they are not required, and this would be interior fire sprinklers. There's nothing exterior at this point. Other point analysis, um, potential point analysis would then be looking at, um, a fully structured, um, being hardened, um, that would not have been required per code. Um, and then obviously, um, looking to see what we want to do with historic structures, if we are wanting to exempt them entirely, or try to find, uh, a happy medium where we can both preserve while also protecting the asset. So yeah, I kind of just blabbered on, but that's at least a, a good overview of everything. Um, I'm happy to, you know, open up to any questions or, or comments. I guess right now, uh, the floor is any of yours.
Thanks, Cliff. Um, Ethan, any questions for Cliff?
Um, can you come back to me? I'm kind of formulating in my head right now something.
Oh, sure, no problem. How about you, Matt?
Um, Cliff, could you explain a scenario where it could be, you know, some positive points and some negative points that would be like a wash? Like you had mentioned in your brief description?
Yeah, so, um, a good example is more or less, um, the negative points for like fiber cement or composite siding. If we then, um, allowed positive points to be awarded, um, if that structure wasn't required to do that installation, I guess you could say. Um, so the, the scope of the applicability would be, um, any new construction, 500 square feet of a footprint addition, or, um, impacts to 25% of the wall surface or the roof surface, um, are all the triggers for actually requiring compliance with this code. Um, so if a property came in, um, and wanted to, you know, um, do a full driveway heating in something and, and got negative points for that, um, they could then get awarded positive points, um, for structure hardening that would then wash out the negative points from the driveway, as well as the negative points from whichever material if they were using composite wood or, or fiber cement. Um, if that's a, a good example, it's a little long-winded.
Sure, yeah, I, I, I just wasn't sure if it would be like, you're awarding positive points for using those materials, and then you're assessing negative points for also using those materials. That seems a little bit, uh, strange, I suppose. I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so ultimately, the idea would be to award it under, um, like a separate new policy if structure hardening was a, a new policy that was implemented. Um, we would assess negative points under Five R. You would then get positive points under, let's say it's voluntary defensible space, or, or Policy 48. Um, you would award the positive points under that, and then they would wash out more or less.
Same thing.
Yes.
So in other words, you get negative points for using the composite, but you get positive points under the fire hardener.
Yes, and, um, we can kind of go to this other, where's my mouse? Um, this other table here, so we are kind of looking at structure hardening as a, a graduation of, um, kind of scope, depending on what they did. Um, and then the awardship for that. Um, this is modeled after our Policy 24R for historic preservation. Um, so properties that do a, a certain point get positive two once they start doing this threshold of improvements rehab, they get positive four, and if they do a full rehabilitation, landmarking, foundation, windows, everything, they would get positive six. Um, so that's just kind of a proposed, um, possible point opportunity as of now. Uh, but would definitely love to get, um, Commission's opinion on, would we even want to structure that? Or would we just want to remove the points for these materials entirely? And then we don't have to deal with this strange point wash situation.
Got it. Thanks for explaining that, Cliff, appreciate it.
Cliff, um, one thing for clarification. If it was like a new single-family home, it would be subject to all the wildfire resiliency code. So it would only be to the extent, and I don't even know how that would work, um, with the single family, if there is still an opportunity to get positive points through structure hardening, if it's brand new, or if that's, they're gonna have to find them somewhere else.
And then I guess that's, um, uh, another portion of the discussion, more or less. Um, it's, you know, continuously been discussed of like double dipping in, in points. Um, for this, um, like the requirement for hardened materials will be under the building code. Um, so an assignment of points, like that's gonna be within the development code. Um, so they are kind of two different, um, policies. Um, so if we wanted to, um, like we could completely, um, do a point analysis that it does make it somewhat of a confusing wash of points, because it's required in their building code, but then you still get negative points under the planning code. Um, so it's kind of a unique, stuck between a rock and a hard place kind of situation. Um, I think staff's recommendation would most likely just be removing the points entirely.
Yeah, I, I think that, you know, we, we've, we've come to the various commissions at times to kind of discuss different building materials, and I know that we, we tend to take a very conservative approach in terms of allowing new materials and such, but I think, um, in light of some of the, um, mandates from the state, I think now is the time to have that discussion again. I think for a while, staff has been comfortable with, you know, uh, doing away with the negative points associated particularly with, with cementitious siding, um, even though we have the exemption if there's other natural materials, but also looking at some other products such as LP Smart Side. And, um, you know, I think both Mark and I have probably been part of at least 20 work sessions over the years, you know, like, uh, related to building materials. And incrementally, some products get the okay, and other ones, we still assess negative points. But I think in light of the state mandates, now is the time to have that conversation again.
Chris, I think it's important for us to go back and take a look at why we have some of the standards that we have. We have a unique situation with the historic properties that we do not have outside of the historic district. And I think it's important for us to say, we could set this historic portion aside, and we can deal with that perhaps with the dual situation of awarding points and taking away points until we really get a handle on how that works. But for all the rest of the stuff, we're ready right now to say, we will allow these materials that are in compliance with the structural hardening, and we won't take that into consideration because the historical precedent isn't there for those properties.
Yeah, and I, I think that's definitely one way of, of, of doing it. And I think for the standards, you know, that are, are the mandates from the state, we do have the carve-out for, uh, for historic properties. So I think we had, you know, we're working with building right now, I think, to say that any contributing property would basically have an exemption, but all other properties that are not contributing historic properties, um, then they would be subject to the, the new mandate.
No, I think that makes it a little bit cleaner as to what we're looking at. You know, we, we need to look at a certain thing for the historic properties, but for everything else, it falls under this umbrella, and it could be uniform throughout the entire town.
So my question was, um, and I, I just a clarification, I guess. So on new, new, new construction, we will need, um, everybody will need to comply with this new hardening mandate. Correct, that's.
Correct.
So we're, we're still talking about applying negative points for these materials that are now required? Am I getting that right?
In preservation.
Shouldn't we just get rid of those negative points for new construction where the materials that we used to give negative points for are required? Why would we give, am I reading this right?
Yes, sir. I think it's staff's mentality that we would just want to remove the points entirely, since it is required.
Okay, that's where I would go. That, that was my question. Okay, thank you.
Obviously, there would still be, um, uh, a caveat for historic properties, as, as Chris mentioned. But yes, any new construction within the town's jurisdiction would have to comply with the mandates from the state. Um, so staff wouldn't necessarily like to further encumber negative points. Um, that would make the project even harder to, I mean, get a passing point analysis. Um, it, it does make it a little bit difficult, as I, I've mentioned, there's, um, I mean, thinking through it, like, we can, uh, award positive points for people that wouldn't be, um, required to do specific work under the real resiliency code. But then now that we're like, awarding positive two points for whatever structure hardening, like, they would then just be required to do the work from the resiliency code, because they would be touching 25% of the roof, or 25% of the siding material, or something. So it, there is a unique gray area there. Um, but it would be the intention that someone's coming in to, you know, build an addition, and, um, it's less than 500 square feet, so it wouldn't be subject to this code, but they're going over height limitation or something, so they would incur negative points. Well, this would allow them, if they did full structure hardening, they could make up the negative points from the building hardening, or, sorry, from the height, uh, for building hardening. Um, but then because they're touching it, now they would be required by the code to have it compliant. So it's kind of putting the cart before the horse in some scenarios. Um, but that's kind of the it's more or less how it falls out when we're trying to award positive points somehow under this, um, new regulations.
I mean, I think, you know, we're, generally, I think for the products we're looking at today, staff is, is comfortable with those products. And we think there's examples where architects have used them appropriately and, and provided, uh, good design. And we think also, understanding that with these mandates, you know, if you do a, a nominal addition or renovation, you're, you're going to have to touch the entire structure, and that's to be potentially, um, a difficult, difficult conversation with a property owner. And I think to continue to give negative points on top of that will make that discussion a lot more difficult. So I think along the lines of what Mark said and what Ethan said, I think it, it is the time to eliminate, uh, negative points.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, it's a, it's also somewhat opening the conversation for other materials in the sense of metal siding and such, if we want to reduce some of the points. Um, that's obviously up for the commission, and, you know, staff could find some other examples around town where we've assigned negative points for, um, metal siding, um, exceeding 25% and such. And, and staff can, or, or commission can review those to see if we're comfortable with it. Um, I mean, there's obviously a, a lot of homes built, um, in the Highlands and the Weishorn and other areas that aren't our, you know, lap siding in the historic district. They have eight different materials, depending on what building massing or roof form, or et cetera. So it's like, there's a lot more than just the composite wood siding and fiber cement. I don't think staff is saying that we want to eliminate the points for those. I think we would still want to have some point assignment. Um, but maybe for metal siding, if we move it to 33%, um, instead of 25%. Um, and that's definitely, I don't know if you can hear me, um, that's definitely helping, um, with structure hardening i- in, in, in general. Um, for wainscottings, flashings, um, there's a lot of stuff within the state's code that will just be requiring metal, um, but it's only six inches. Typically, with our snow and such, you're seeing something two to three feet on wall surfaces to help kind of, um, just, um, not necessarily fire harden, but, um, just moisture and snow and ice and, and other buildups. Um, there's a, a lot of parameters.
Cliff, I think you hit on a good point here. Um, I don't think we want to be in a situation where we encourage a builder or an owner to cover his entire building with hardy siding. Some of the projects that we looked at tonight that were more attractive than the others were that way because of the mixture of different materials. And the mixture of those different materials and the aesthetic use of those, um, leads to a more interesting building. And I think that we want to be careful to craft our points and our codes so that we encourage someone to use a mixture of hardening materials rather than one uniform material on a whole building.
You know, another example that might be brick. Um, do we want to, do we want to allow 100% brick without points? Or is there some type of limitation?
That's a great example, Mark.
Well, right now.
What's that?
So I think we need to be careful that we're not necessarily doing this historic thing, but we still have the character of Breckenridge, and we want a specific look to be encouraged. And we want to encourage that through the generous and intelligent use of the point system.
Yeah, I think that's a, a really good point, and I think that's the direction that staff would like to go as well, having some of that flexibility so both our builder and design community can, you know, still operate. Um, obviously, with the energy code as well as this resiliency code, um, building next year is, i- it's drastically different than what it is this year. Um, so it will, um, take some time, um, to definitely get the education piece out there, um, as well as, um, you know, even for staff here of making sure that we get the code language correct, um, to allow that flexibility, but then also incentivizing various, even if it is James Hardy, having James Hardy ba- uh, board and batten, or James Hardy vertical siding, and still having variations across the facade, um, I think is still something that staff wants to achieve.
Elaine, did you have questions for Cliff?
Well, you kind of touched on my biggest question, and it had to do with the points, because the question talked about, um, removing penalties. So it sounds like you're not gonna move, remove them for like metal siding. You'll keep some still, but it's at higher percentages, they'll be bigger.
Yeah, um, and definitely open to, to commission's comments on that. Um, if we look back at the table, let me.
Building with all one siding? It seems contradictory to what historically we've had here. Like, Breckenridge is about eclectic, different sightings. I think that's part of what we have, because of this.
Historically, a poor miners' town, you know, you used whatever you could get your hands on as this material. Um, I think, you know, Elaine, you bring up a, a wonderful point. Um, if we look at this, composite siding is breaking up in thirds. Um, so zero to 33%, 33 to 60, and so on. Um, others are 25%. So, you know, would, would the commission make the recommendation to, instead of quarters, go to thirds um, of each, um, building elevation? Or do you know, is it remove elevation and it's just 25% of the entire building can be, you know, metal? It, it, whatever the commission, um, thinks. I think the installations we saw today, none of them, um, really included metal that we typically wouldn't have seen. Um, for both atrium as well as Main Street Mall, they're using, um, a corrugated metal as a wainscoting. Um, atrium also had a natural rock wainscoting as well. Um, so there are, you know, many variations that the design community can come up with, um, to kind of meet the code, but then also you're not using one uniform for the entire building is all metal, or, you know, um, so there's definitely some flexibility. I think staff would like to hear commissioners' comments on it.
I was gonna add also that we have, um, we've always treated on larger buildings, like, example, the buildings at the base of PK8 where Mike probably knows this better than I do, but over the, I think it's over the fourth story where it had to be non-combustible per the building code. We've never assessed negative points in the area where they had to harden that portion of the building. So in a lot of ways, I think we're just looking to move under that philosophy, you know, uh, now for every aspect of the building except for historic buildings. And, and so a lot of ways, we've already kind of been doing this for a while, but in a more, uh, specific application, uh, related to larger, larger buildings.
So what I'm kind of hearing from you is that the points would be removed maybe for the lowest level, or like metal, there would be no points assessed. Actually, it's right now twenty-five percent. And then, but like bump it up to thirty-three percent with no points and then some points for thirty-three to sixty-six or something like that.
Yeah, I think addition would be removing points entirely for composite wood siding as well as the cementitious. And then reorganizing our brick, metal siding, stucco. redoing the graduation of when points are assessed based off the percentage of the elevation. But it could be, you know,
Wouldn't encourage the metal siding, it would just encourage fiber cement.
Yes, I I guess what I'm saying is like for metal siding, moving it to a thirty-three percent would allow more flexibility for the design community to implement structure hardens across a larger structure and having a little bit more flexibility, but I don't think that the town of Breck would like to see a fully metal siding building anywhere in town. I I mean, definitely, our our discussion is primarily focused on historic district versus everywhere else. But I think even there's some aspects that the town doesn't want in our, you know, Highlands and Weishorn and Warriors Mark. We just, I don't think we would want to entertain a fully metal building or, I mean, even brick, I mean, historically, brick was not used within Breckenridge. We have very few brick buildings. We do have a few that are historic. So there is that, but typically it's a institutional usage. So thinking of the building that we're in or the library on Harris. So I think, you know, maybe removing initial points and moving it to a thirty-three percent. And that way people could use brick products. I I don't know if like a brick veneer would be encompassed within which ignition resistant or, you know, composite material or something. I guess it just depends on what company is making the brick veneer. But that could also be used as a a wainscoting or accent material. It's allowed as an accent material currently.
Okay, my next question had to do with your positive points. Why so, why are the points half for the historic properties versus the defensible space? It just feels why, why are those so low? Three points for full structural hardening.
I think some aspect of it, and that's more or less something staff hasn't fully fletched out. How much structure hardening could actually be done on a historic property? I think some mentality from the town is we don't want to start doing that for historic structures. We still want them to visibly show their historic wood siding and the historic windows and all of these other aspects. But maybe doing some of the vents and site management and roofing materials are things that we can focus on which realistically are already required in the code. So that's kind of one of those aspects where it could be seen as double dipping because it would be required per, like if a historic property came in and did a massive new addition or something like that, new addition would be required to be structure hardened. But then like the rest of the building, like we would want to maintain the preservation aspect of it and and have that visible. So I think this is you know, very preliminary point analysis. So I mean, if you believe that it is, you know, it it's it's worthy of more points, we could definitely adjust that. But I think in the current minimal amount of work that could be done to harden a historic structure, I don't think that it's worth six points to do site management, vents and a roof. So there's definitely some aspects that, you know, we can work with Mike as well as our our other building community to see where certain implementations can fall into the develop, or the Department of Interior's historic preservation standards and see if that we can find a pathway forward through that. But I think at this time, this is just kind of the draft that we have.
Okay, and did you, I mean, to me, I look at these basic measures of the lowest level and we're giving positive points for them, but maybe was there consideration that that should be required for these projects?
Yes, I mean, some of it will be required. So as I said, for like a new addition, like that would be required, but then it kind of goes into the historic exempt, in wow, exemption discussion. The historic structure itself would be completely exempted from it. So the screens, the roofing material, even though we require a class A assembly regardless. That would be exempted based on the historical the national registrar, if it's in local or state program.
Oh, it talked about here, he said red, white and blue, talked about that the roofing was the most critical or fire safety. I felt like I read that in one of these.
Possibly, yes. I mean, ultimately, the most critical aspects are going to be your roofing material, having site management, that's zero to five foot, your vents, and then like flashing. So already in our code, we made some code changes, I believe, last year of implementing in the conservation district, zero to three feet of a non-combustible layer, and that's just a horizontal on the ground, typically a rock drip edge that's already being installed. But that is like super important. So it's a mixture of both the structure hardening aspects of class A roof assemblies, you know, your vents, but then also coordinating with your site management. So it's, it's a mixture of both that red, white and blue have said that are, are like, we really need to focus on, especially within
Why not?
District.
Just do points for like, hey, your roof is this level, you're because, because this is a lot of things listed here for six points and they might have a tree right next to the building that they want to keep, but
So there's a lot of parameters and like, staff will have to step up our review in some of this. Typically, like, yes, we look at your, your roof color. But that's it. Like, we don't really care what, you know, fire rating. I mean, obviously, our building department still requires it to be a class A assembly, which is the requirement of the code. So like, some of these aspects are going to be required automatically for some of the properties. So it is somewhat difficult to find the the point analysis. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I also wanted to bring up, like, my HOA requires that I have certain kind of shingles on my roof. I cannot put metal on right now. Can the town override?
So the, I I was literally in a training this morning, actually, and HOAs came up. Ultimately, a lot of HOAs are going to have to change their regulations. They cannot basically be less strict than what the state requirements are. So I mean, even there were, there's some neighborhoods somewhere and the reason we prohibited cedar shake shingles, that was a requirement of their HOA. The person came in, talked to the town, and then we made the change because we don't want the fire risk. So that HOA would then need to change their regulations. For your HOA, as long as it is still a class A material, they could require you to have a specific type and color if they want to, because that's completely separate from this code.
Very nice report and helpful tour. I think this is very relevant, very current. I wondered if you had looked at the Secretary Standards Preservation Brief sixteen use of substitute materials on historic building exteriors.
I have not reviewed it at length.
I just emailed it to you.
Perfect.
So, yeah, take a look. I think it's absolutely what we're
You said sixteen?
Yeah. And so it it goes through all sorts of materials, siding, shingles, porches, windows and sub, suitable substitute materials. Having said that, the devil's in the details. They, this is only a two-year-old preservation brief, so it's very relevant, current, and
What is that, Mike?
So that's, the preservation briefs are the technical notes that explain to practitioners how the Secretary of the Interior standards for preservation are to be implemented. There's about fifty of them, everything from like additions to historic buildings to, I don't know, historic windows.
And this is through the Park Service?
Yes, but it's, it's the Secretary of Interior and it's who our code, our preservation code is based on. So, take a look.
Yeah, thank you for sharing.
But I'll, I'll, I'll offer one anecdote. They, at about the same time, they retired the preservation brief on vinyl and aluminum siding. You know, that tells you that this is evolving and just as we learned on our tour, some solutions and materials are better than others. And I think if we're going to allow this on historic structures, we really have to be careful about the specific materials and quality of those materials that we would, and the detailing of those. I've seen it done on park service projects and it works really well, but you could really muck up an historic structure if you're not careful. But nice work and look forward to more discussions.
Thank you for sharing that. That's definitely good information to to have. And I mean, as I kind of prefaced, we will probably have quite a few more work sessions in the future to kind of really nail down some of this and the historic preservation is one of them. And I think, you know, both commission and staff will really want to have the discussion regarding of do we just want to keep the historic exemption entirely? Or do we really want to develop a system that we can award positive points for structure hardening? I think, you know, just as a wildfire coming in, we have structure to structure risk in our downtown area, especially with just how dense it is. So that is definitely a concern as well as wildfire is the primary one, but any structure hardening will help preserve our cultural resources. Thank you, Mike.
Mark?
Are you going to touch on the issue of fire sprinklers? Because I'm a little confused. We're talking about structural hardening, which is from the exterior. Fire sprinklers are typically a life safety issue for the interior of buildings. Are you going to touch on that at all?
Yeah, so in our discussion with red, white and blue in the building department last week, the discussion around sprinklers came up specifically, well, actually, we discussed interior and exterior. Interior sprinklers currently, I believe it's a, is it six thousand or sixty-six hundred, six thousand square foot trigger that once you go over that, depending, there's some regulations, if it's, you know, a full new residence or if it's an addition, you would then be required to sprinkle either the full house or just the addition portion. That is being reduced down to forty-five hundred square feet. Currently, the fire department is working with all of the building departments within our county to kind of mesh on that and get support. I think everyone is very supportive of it in just the sense that structure hardening, yes, it's on the outside, but if there were to be some kind of event, interior structure, or sorry, interior sprinklers for the structure will still help combat some of the fire. From their perspective, exterior sprinklers is not something particularly for our climate, something that we want to get into. Yes, we see a lot of installations in like California and and other areas around the US, but just for our climate, there's nothing that's tried and true and there is no standards around it. So there's nothing that we could actually you know, adhere to, to tell someone to do this installation. Somewhat of a side note, if you would like me to, I can share information on Monday. There is a startup that
Can we stick with that a minute? Because I've got a few comments about this.
Yeah. Let me finish my thought. There is an exterior sprinkler installation going on in Silverthorne on Monday at nine thirty AM. Julian McCluskey will be there, just looking at the installation and seeing if, you know, we would want to look into exterior sprinklers for our mountain communities. So just reach out to me after the meeting if you would like to go to that. I can send the information. First, fire sprinklers. It's not necessarily within the development purview. I have added it into this discussion because we are looking for positive, positive points. So for this, if it would not be required by the forty-five hundred square foot trigger that the red, white and blue is putting as well as Summit Fire EMS, you would then get positive points for installing an interior sprinkler system. From their perspective, it will help just the fire risk from wildfires as well as structure to structure. So that's more or less all I can talk to, but if you do have any questions, I can do some specific research or maybe have the building department.
From a builder's standpoint, Cliff, interior sprinklers have always been an issue where you don't save a building, but you do allow people to be able to get out of the building in time to save their lives. And really, that's the only function that interior sprinklers really function well on. They don't do anything to protect a building catching on fire and then catching another building next to it on fire unless that building happens to be adjacent. Where I built, I had to sprinkle everything I did. So every new home, regardless of the square footage, had to be sprinkled.
How much does it cost to add that to?
Excuse me? When I did that, it would cost me, and and, you know, this is at least five years back, but it would cost me anywhere from thirteen to seventeen thousand dollars to provide a system for a house. Now, we do it a little differently there than what happens here. And when I had the discussion with my builder about sprinkling my home, the number that came back was seventy-five thousand dollars. And there were a lot of reasons for that seventy-five thousand dollars, but one of which was that typically residential sprinkler systems are done with CPVC materials, which are far less expensive and more economical to install than are copper piping, which is how it's done out here. And Ethan, feel free to jump in here and and correct me, but that's a huge difference in the cost of a home. And we're trying to be mindful of not only workforce housing, but housing in general and pricing these things out. We're already adding net zero to the house, to the housing costs. And now we're talking about adding sprinklers to the housing cost because white and blue wants it. I understand why red, white and blue wants it. All the fire departments want it because it does help them when they have to go into a building when they have an extra five or ten minutes to get in and get out because the sprinklers are helping with the fire situation, but they don't put a fire out. I think that if we're going to do this, we need to look at the cost benefit and not just say, we should do this.
Okay, Mark, to clarify, the, the International Building Code requires sprinklers in all residential structures. And when we adopted that code in Breckenridge and Summit County, we made an exception based on the availability of the fire department within ten minutes of all structures in the, in the county. They said, we don't need to go to that extreme and and incur all that cost also for workforce housing and so on and so forth. So they set that standard at six thousand square feet so that smaller houses did not have to conform to this, to that code. Lowering it to forty-five hundred, I think, still gets us there because workforce houses are always under forty-five hundred square feet. And even if they are multiplex buildings, when it is, it is on each unit, not the entire building because you have fire separation. not the entire building because you have fire separation between the buildings. So I see your point. However, I don't think it's applicable here in that we're still going to be at the forty-five hundred square foot threshold to require sprinkler systems. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think another clarification just for the group is the change from six thousand to forty-five hundred is completely independent of this wildfire resiliency code. That is a discussion that has already been happening at the building department and fire districts within the county well before this was adopted. So yes, sprinklers are somewhat involved within this, but the requirement for sprinklers, we have no control of. They will be required at the forty-five hundred regardless.
Ethan, is my comments about cost irrelevant or inappropriate or?
No, it's, it's relevant in that it adds cost. But what I was trying to point out, it's only in the high-end buildings, residential structures. Anybody who's building forty-five hundred square feet and above is in the high end. And, and so it's not relevant to what you were saying about workforce housing and bringing those costs up. In other words, the, the, the thought process, as, as I understood it when we changed it, again, the International Building Code specifies that all residential structures, no matter what, are to be sprinkled. Now, we're allowed to make local adaptations to that code, which we did in Summit County, to bring that threshold to six thousand. And the thinking was if you're building a house over six thousand square feet, you can afford to put in a sprinkler system. And allowing smaller structures for more work, workforce-type houses and, and, and work, working-class people would not be burdened by this extra cost. And what I'm saying is this change in the code, while Cliff is correct that it's not part of the hardening thing, it's, it's a separate thing, still keeps us within that, that it's not adding burdensome cost to low-income housing because they won't need to put sprinklers in.
So the only thing we're really looking at here in our purview, to just repeat what Cliff said is, is it worthy to give some positive points for those structures that are under forty-five hundred? Then to sprinkle?
It'd be either under forty-five hundred or a existing house that's above the, the current threshold, but doesn't, isn't required by any building code to do so.
And I would like to clarify that this was a recommendation directly from red, white, and blue. This isn't staff coming up with the positive. I mean, obviously, we were asking for positive points, but they gave this to us as an incentive, more or less of like, if properties were to install this below the forty-five hundred, red, white, and blue sees it as a benefit overall. So that's why in our development code, we were suggesting, I think it was two points.
I, I hear what Mark says, and certainly there is a cost to this, but I see this, just as the other Mark said, as voluntary, and it's a way you could pick up a couple of points by making the investment.
Absolutely.
There's a, a public good to sprinkling a home. I would add that the National Park Service routinely sprinkles almost all buildings for both life safety and structure preservation and containing fires within a structure and not allowing them to spread. I, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I concur. I think adding the points to voluntary under forty-five hundred is, is, is a good idea.
So back to my price question, I have from like thirteen K to seventy-five K, what's a modest house going to cost in this county?
Eight bucks a square foot.
About right.
With a, with a fixed cost for the stand pipe and then service entrance and all of that.
And it varies depending on, on what kind of piping you use. You can use cheaper piping. Copper is going to be the most expensive. You can use CP- PVC and so on.
A twenty thousand-ish.
Yeah.
Two thousand square foot house. Okay.
Mark, anything else?
No.
Okay, I had a couple. I'm not clear on how we could incentivize retrofitting, retroactive implementation of these standards.
So it, it is, it's kind of that gray area of like what the trigger is. So if a property was to come in and do less than five hundred square feet of an addition and the code specifies footprint addition. So even in the training this morning, they were discussing if you went up, that's not necessarily footprint. But anyways, besides the point, if it was not required at that point, they wouldn't need to do anything in this code. So if they were doing addition of a hundred and twenty-five square feet, but then they did want to go ahead and redo the roof and do all of the venting and ensure all of their gutters are non-combustible and the fencing and making sure there's no combustible fencing within eight feet of the structure. Like, there's so many parameters that would be retrofitting an existing structure that would have not been required under the resiliency code.
Right, but I'm thinking, you know, absent doing an addition, you know, do we have ways of encouraging people with older homes to put fire-resistant siding on, let's say?
Yeah, it does make it a little bit difficult because the trigger's twenty-five percent. So if someone was coming in to redo their siding, they would have to comply with the new standards. So that's already kind of like a retroactive built into the code. The portion of it in development code is how do we get people to retroactively become compliant when it's not required from the state's code? So that's where it, it will take kind of some unique language to, I guess, identify those, but it would basically be addition less than five hundred square feet. Anytime they get negative points for something and they need to make up positive, they could do a full re-roof or a full siding project or, you know, like the, I keep losing my sheet. Like the basic measures within structure hardening and defensible space, just doing the zero to five feet non-combustible zone and ensuring they have a rock wainscoting and stuff like that would all be small implement, implementations that would help retroactive structures become a little bit more compliant when they're not doing a, you know, five hundred square foot addition or redoing their entire roof or something. So it is, there's going to be a small amount in there, but that's where we do want to award it because the town council is looking for possible positive points within structure hardening. Well, just within the development code period, and this is one opportunity.
How does this intersect with the Firewise program? Does this make this, the Firewise program sort of not?
So Firewise mainly is focused on site management. So this actually is right with it. It pairs wonderfully. This is more or less the intersection of structure hardening, which is really focused on, you know, exterior cladding and what's your roof materials and such. But then pairing that with, you know, the hundred feet out from your property, what is your vegetation? You know, where are you storing your firewood? There's so many other parameters. So this works in conjunction with Firewise standards. They do use slightly different language, but more or less the measurements and the overall intention are exactly what we have in our code.
It's my understanding that Firewise also focuses on roofing. You know, we had Matt Benedict come around years ago. And he did not want to certify our subdivision because there were so many cedar shingle roofs.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I guess I'm not necessarily too knowledgeable about actually receiving the certification, but the, the standards that we have, you know, I have researched immensely and and we've done the code amendments previously with council and planning commission. It's mainly focused on the site management. But Matt Benedict has, he was in our meeting last week and he is still working on so many parameters of this from Firewise, structure hardening, working with insurance companies, working with property owners. If you haven't had your property assessed recently, the county has paid for a whole new software that I would highly recommend people partake in. Ultimately, I'm blanking on what it's called right now, but I'll email all the information out to you. More or less, Matt will come and do an assessment on your property and then you're able to go back in, see what he's recommended, take the photos of, we did this, we did that, we did that. He check it off, it creates a report. You can send that directly to your insurance company and they see what implementations you're actually have been doing. So it's a little bit tangent, but both for Firewise, structure hardening, everything that the town, red, white, and blue and the county has been, you know, doing over the past couple of years, we're all working in the same direction.
So do you need us to go through these questions?
Yeah, we, we can go to the questions.
Susan, did, did we, I think Ethan wanted to wait to?
No, no, I, thanks, Mark. I got my question in.
You got it? Okay, Matt's good too? Okay, thanks.
Yes, I'm good.
So open to any other questions or discussion? Or we can go straight into the, the questions and I can put them up on the screen for everyone to see.
Okay, Ethan, did you want to comment on the questions?
Sure. On number one, does the commission believe policy five hours should amend it to remove penalties? That would be yes. Does the commission agree? Number two, commission agree, new positive points should be created for C-work compliant construction, or should penalties simply be removed? I think the penalty should be removed. Three, should incentives be provided for historic structures where structures hardening materials are allowed while maintaining performance? Let me reread that. Should incentives be provided for historic structures where structure hardening materials are allowed while maintaining? Yes, incentives should be provided. How should exemptions for historic properties be structured to balance preservation and fire safety? And that seems to be something we're still discussing, correct?
Correct.
So, there you go there. Number four, does the commission agree positive points should be rewarded for voluntary implementation of C-work standards? Yes. Number five, does the commission agree a phased approach for positive points to incentivize retroactive standard implementations is good stepping stone? Yes. Number six, does the commission agree that positive points should be awarded for interior fire sprinklers? That, yes. And number seven, I do not have any additional comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. How about you, Matt?
Uh, I, number one, yes, I think they should remove the penalties for, you know, materials that are compliant. Yeah, positive points should be created for compliant construction. With the caveat that some of the negative points are removed. Three, yes, incentives should be for the historic structures, absolutely. Uh, number four, yes. Positive points should be awarded. Yes, phased approach, that makes sense to me, yes. Six, yes as well, and no comments. No additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Elaine?
Okay, so number one is the removing penalties. I believe we should on the lower end of the percentages, but not on the higher end of the percentages. I know that's vague. Also think that we should, I know you guys are trying to be nice, but I think we should have negative points for fiber cement siding if it's over a certain percentage. I don't know what that should be. I think we want to encourage diverse materials. I think all the other ones I agree with, so. Do you guys want me to go through all of them? Yes, yes, yes?
No. Yes, 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 got it.
Mike?
Number one, yes. Number two, yes. Number three, historic materials, curiously, no. I, I think until we get a better understanding and better articulation of that, it would become an excuse to demolish historic materials and put up what might be cheaper. And example I think of is a little gray house behind.
Twist.
Twist. And they had perfectly good, they had perfectly good siding and they wanted to tear it off and put up crap. So tread very carefully there. Four, voluntary implementation, yes. Five, the phased approach for retroactive, I could go either way. And then positive points for interior fire sprinkler. I think there's a public good to that when it's voluntary and not otherwise required. Additional comments, Secretary's Standards Preservation Brief, number sixteen.
Mark?
I've got yes to one, yes to two. I agree with Mike, we should tread very carefully until we understand exactly what it is that we're looking at in substituting historic materials on historic buildings. And the balance of the questions, I answer yes to. And my only comment is that I think that we need to incentivize the use of a diversity of materials on any buildings.
Yes, to number one. Yes, to number two. I think Mike raises a good point about historic structures. And I think that we should move cautiously on that. Four, yes. Five, yes. And six, yes. For buildings not otherwise required. Anything else?
Mark, can you clarify, were you yes for the rest of the questions and then your comment is just diversifying the materials?
Yeah, we, we need to find a way to, to try to incentivize, and I'm not necessarily saying that we need to come up with a point system, but we need to incentivize slash encourage the use of a diversity of materials on building elevations.
Perfect. But then you were yes for the rest of the questions? Four, five, six?
Yeah, and I, I had the caveat of number three, that we need to be very careful there not to create a situation where people are substituting inferior materials for things that are historic.
Yes, sir. Okay, got it. Thank you for clarifying. Awesome. And that is it. Thank you for a wonderful discussion.
Thank you.
Nice work, Cliff.
Mark, town council?
Sure, thanks. Thanks, Cliff. He's done a ton of work on this, as you guys can tell.
He has.
Council, a couple of weeks ago, since we had that fifth Tuesday, I don't have a lot to report. The planning, the planning commission decisions, which included the parcel six subdivision was approved. And so took your approval and approved that. Runway neighborhood, there was this discussion about the deed restriction there. And council was good with how that has been crafted. There are a few things you're talking about in terms of is there going to be some type of AMI cap and target? It was decided that that would only come into play on the like townhome units. There was, they were still. There was, they were still, the, the, the larger units would still be priced at a certain AMI target. But there wouldn't actually be income testing in that except for the townhome units. There's going to be four single-family that have a deed restriction light. And it means that basically they can resell at any price, but they have to be occupied by local workforce, employed 30 hours a week, gainfully in Summit County. And the reason for that, and they're going to be priced at a high dollar amount, like they're thinking around 1.3 million each. But it was an opportunity to help out the overall budget sum on this project, which is hugely expensive. And so it's kind of a test case here. I think in the first phase, there's going to be four units that are priced as such. Everything else will have a resale cap on it that's basically like 3% a year you can increase over time. Then provided a overview of our upcoming comprehensive plan update to the council. I'm not going to get into that tonight since I think that's going to be agenda, probably at your next meeting, agenda item. So we'll get into that in more detail at the next meeting. So that's basically it.
With that then, the planning commission meeting of October 7th, 2025 is concluded at 6:42. Thank you.
Nice job.
Good job.
Thanks, folks. See you in a couple of weeks.
Ethan?
Ethan. And, and, uh, thank you.